Okay, good morning, everybody. This is a special work session for concerning reorganization for April sixth, twenty twenty four.
August.
August sixth, twenty twenty four. There was a little bit of a slip there, huh? Okay, welcome. Who's up?
We are.
So, the board had asked that we come back with a recommendation based on the feedback we got from employees, the feedback from the board, and some conversations that we had. And so, in front of you, you have a recommended org chart showing a position conversion from the Parks and Trails D E M manager to just the D E M manager, in addition of a Parks and Trails manager, I T manager, and executive assistant. So, a total of three positions being added, one being converted. And then you should also have in front of you the reorg cost breakdown. And again, what I did was I put a mid-range of step five and just put the I T and Parks and Trails manager in range thirty-eight, where the other managers are at facilities, and the D E M Parks and Trails manager currently. And then a mid-range for, I guess, I then deleted out or minus, subtracted, is a better word. Um.
Hi, Nicole. I'm sorry.
Um, took out lead pay that are in those departments currently, D E M, Parks and Trails, and I T. And then I also subtracted out the current central services manager, including the longevity salary. Um, and then did a total cost overall for what it was for those three positions and a position conversion. And then Commissioner Nellin had asked for the F T E count for back to two thousand eighteen. So, we have a summary of that. Um, and thanks to Jen Byerly, our budget and finance manager, to put that together, because boy, was I struggling with the US. And Commissioner Shudy has asked now for two thousand seventeen to be added, so I will ask her to send me that line as well.
Because in two thousand seventeen, you had pretty serious reductions at Parks and Trails. So, that would give you an idea of kind of the lowest of the low to where we are today and whether they've been able to recoup those positions that they lost in seventeen.
Yeah, that's important.
So, where are we looking to go from here? These managers' positions, are they working managers or do we figure that out or?
I think they would be straight managers. I mean, I think that they can obviously do some of the work that, um, you know, kind of like facilities works, but I think that, you know, to like backup or if there's somebody gone or something like that. But on a day-to-day basis, I think that we're shooting for more of a high-level strategic type of manager that we're currently don't have right now, and someone who can actually be dedicated to performance management and help some of those issues that we're currently encountering with with those groups because we don't have a manager.
But if we do that, you have to also then include what it's going to be like to backfill. Because we're not going to leave the positions. If we move them to management, they're not working. We're not going to have an empty position.
Well, that's where I'm saying there would be a creation of three positions. Well, two managers, one executive assistant, which we've already approved.
So, one of the challenges that we have, Commissioner, is that, um, you know, from a day-to-day operational perspective, what we have in place right now works really well. Um, so, we have individuals in place that can that can push the staff out to, um, go out and maintain what we currently have. Um, I think we're seeing it, and it's been brought to even finer light to me. Um, so, we have our 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 major comprehensive plan update going on, which a portion of that is the capital facilities plan component. And what what we have on the planning commission, we have members of our planning commission that are really asking for a level of detail of these future projects. And when we sit down with the staff within these individual divisions, they're focused on day-to-day operations. So, we have Diane that's kind of pulled together information from consultants over the past. So, example would be Parks. Um, back in two thousand and
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, we had a Parks master plan update. What did you call it? The?
The PROS.
PROS?
Yeah, it's the comprehensive plan for Parks and Trails.
So, they they then forecasted out for a period of six, eight years to say, hey, what does what does it look like, what we need to do? And they really broke it down by each individual park. So, having that is beneficial. But the individuals working within our departments aren't really focused on, okay, what project do I need to do next year? Or how do I get this before the board to help them prioritize the things that we want to get done in the future? And so, you don't have an individual that's looking at that future to say, how are we going to plan for this? How are we going to get money for this? What are some of the projects that we want to do? Um, it's really clear within Parks, I think, that that they are focused on, how do we maintain what we currently have? And that's a full-time job for the people that we have there. Um, to to put a manager into that position, I think that you could get an individual looking out into the future, planning, establishing projects, looking for funding. Um, I T, similar, right? Um, we have an amazing I T team. Um, and the individuals on the team are looking out into the immediate future to say, all right, we're we're seeing things go to the cloud more often, right? Applications that are being brought to the I T steering committee are being evaluated uh, based on on the need of individual departments and offices at that time. But then looking out into the future of I T and saying, okay, how are we going to plan for this? What are some of the things that we need to be prepared for? Um, and how do we manage the the staff within that individual division? Um, they're all part of a of a of a group. They're all part of a union. And so, you don't really have that individual day-to-day operationally that can hold people, shouldn't say hold them accountable, because I think they do hold them accountable, but really don't have the authority to to really provide that. They definitely provide input um, in terms of evaluations that are done, but any type of disciplinary action would have to go through Diane. So, those are the, that's where, you know, you'd asked, the commission had asked, like, what's the what's the what's the wish list associated with that? Um, having individuals within those positions that could plan out for the long term and actually look for and and work with the commission on on defining a priority of the projects that we have out there, and then look for the funding associated with it, would allow us to have the broad scope of responsibility that then reports to me. Right? So, it's not, it's not me having to get down into the details of Parks and be able to evaluate everything, look for funding, doing, you know, and and come before the board to ask for priorities, establishment of priorities. Um, it's just somebody to manage that day-to-day stuff.
So, if we're to do this, what does that bow wave look like? What are we looking, are we looking at one person in Parks that we need to bring in also?
You'd look for a manager in Parks.
Okay, but will we, if we move somebody, we need something there, are we creating another position in Parks?
Yes.
Okay, and how much is that?
It's right here.
Fully loaded? No, I don't mean, I don't mean that one. I mean the, I'm asking if we're hiring another body into Parks because we do this.
That's what the manager is. That's another body in Parks.
Okay, so, we're looking at doing that completely separate and so it wouldn't be moving somebody up or anything like that?
No, it'd be, yeah.
It'd be posted if someone could apply.
Yeah.
It could move somebody up, and then that would create a opening, yeah.
Through a meritorious process.
Correct.
And are these fully loaded or is this a?
Yes, because these are fully loaded. I used Jen's awesome worksheet that she used.
She's incredible.
I love that worksheet.
And this is the same range, the thirty-eight, where like we have right now facilities manager and the D E M Parks manager, the same salary range on the non-union.
And we wouldn't have to have lead anymore.
Correct. These are the D DoCS down below of everything that would go away.
I like that. I feel better about that.
Well, I'm only laughing because you've had a problem with that since you first got there.
I have, because I understand liability.
I don't disagree with you. I just, it's just.
I think this is the, I think this is the path forward period.
I think so, too.
I'm going to go along with it, too. That's what we're going to do. We're going to do it. I would rather than be working, but it is what it is.
And I did talk to Kelly about what he does, because, and he actually came to me, and he said, Diane, he goes, I'm not like doing the work with the guys. He goes, I'm organizing it. I'm making sure that they're doing it. If, you know, there's something heavy and they need help lifting it, of course, I help. But he goes, I'm not doing the work, because I'm just there with them all the time, making sure.
He's, he's being a manager.
Yeah, and organizing it, getting what they need, the paperwork.
Right.
You know.
And that's what I would expect the other ones to do as well. I mean, that's what, that's what I expect all of our directors, managers to do is to be the 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 leader, I guess, that they should be.
And so, when I look at Kelly as an example, I mean, Kelly, Kelly Fraser actually intricately knows every facility that the county operates out of. He sits down on an annual basis with Diane and Jen and says, kind of, here's the status of the facilities that we have out there. Um, there there's questions that come up about, uh, so, we have an HVAC project listed on our capital facilities plan. And they say, well, I thought you replaced an HVAC in building one, let's say, last year, so why do you still have HVAC on there? Well, we may have six different HVAC units on building one. Um, but, and they're all varying, um, lifespans. Within Mason County, we actually have actually taken the approach that we maintain things until they fail, and then we replace them. So, we're not going out there predominantly and saying, hey, um, this, this, let's use roofs, right? Because we've we've done some roofs lately. So, we have a roof that has an estimated useful life of twenty years. So, at the, we don't, I mean, we may plan for that twenty-first year having to replace it, but if we get to the twentieth year and that roof's not leaking and it still looks okay, it's going to stay there until Kelly looks at it and says, hey, wait a minute. It's to the point now where we need to replace it, and he'll go replace it. HVAC units, um, very similar. I'm concerned about some of these. Um, when something goes down, uh, he works with professionals to kind of size it appropriately and determine how do we, how do we condition the space in there? Is the space used the same as it was when the air conditioning unit was initially installed? Probably not. So, can we do something different? Can we put in a different type of unit? And so, he works with the professionals on the private side, um, to to appropriately size those things and replace those things. Um, but we're not going in and saying, hey, this HVAC unit is twenty years old, still working, but we probably should replace it.
Yeah, he does a great job, and that's what I would expect all the other managers to do, to, in addition to going out and looking for more money, money, too, because we don't have our budget writer, or not a budget writer, or or grant writer.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. So, if anybody's listening and they know a good grant writer.
We actually have one. We're going to work with H R. We have number two that that I think is, I'm going to reach back out to.
But that's what I would expect that these other managers to do as well, especially in Parks and, um, D E M and and public worksheet. There's still a lot of grants and stuff out there for that also. But being a good manager, I think that that's something that we've, we've needed for a while. Diane's amazing. And she's leaving us. And so.
Well, that's why you need managers. Because once you get the money, then you've got to manage the project behind it, so that becomes a big project on its own.
Right.
And and it's, and Diane's provided support to them, right?
She has.
And so, she's given them the tools that they need in order to maintain everything. But I don't think that Diane's focus has been, five years out, where are we going to be in Parks and how do we get there? Right? And coming back to the commission and saying, all right, hey, we want to, we want to do a a new, um, I shouldn't use the turf field, because we actually did bring that before the board and said, you know, you guys said this is a priority. We want to do a new field up in Sand Hill, and we want to do a turf field. And we actually went out and got a cost estimate on it. We applied for all the R C O grants. Diane managed all of that through that process. Um, but as I'm looking at this PROS and I'm seeing all of these, um, evaluations of each individual park, there's pieces of those things that I think a Parks manager could say, I can tackle these in two thousand twenty-five. And I'm going to make sure that I have the staff and the resources to go and do that work and then and then actually get that done. Um, whereas right now, I think that we're maintaining. I mean, we've got so many parks. How many parks do we have?
Twenty.
Twenty park, twenty-some parks. And so, we have a handful of people, if that, to go out and manage all these things. And so, that's the, that's the challenge, right, is that they're they're really focused on day-to-day operations, fixing the things that break, repairing the restrooms that aren't working, doing some upgrades periodically to to just maintain things so that they last a little bit longer. Um, but you get to a point with, look at M C R A fields. Bud has told us, hey, we have a couple of fields that are actually getting pretty worn out, and you may need to replace those within the next year. Well, it's kind of a short timeframe to say, okay, gosh, we got to, now we got to go out and get new turf fields. If we could actually plan that out two, three years down the road, then we have more of an opportunity to go out and search for some of those funds and do some of that work.
Not only we talk about the position, not the person, but to be honest, I don't know that anyone other than Diane could split five departments. And so, for every department project that needs her attention, that's that many departments that are going without her attention. And so, I just think that there's no reasonable way to move forward without having managers to devote that much attention to each department.
Well, and I think, let's be real, I mean, it's not like Parks has a problem on Monday, and then you don't get to hear from them again until the following week. I mean, it doesn't, it, these things all oftentimes happen at once or, you know, right on top of each other. And so, it's not like, it's not like, you know, it's not I T Tuesday, you know?
Yeah.
So, you're always having to to triage and everything. And so, this is, I mean, this is just the nature of the business that we're in.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to be realistic about that.
And and we have amazing staff that make it work, right? I mean, everyone at these departments, we have amazingly qualified, dedicated staff that work their rear ends off to make sure that that these things remain open, that they're safe, that they do that work, and and would never take anything away from them for the work that they do. But planning out into the future, we do need a manager to do that.
So, next step.
Do you have any, do you disagree with any of those statements?
No, I mean, I think right now the staff knows what needs to be done, but, yeah, they're so busy just trying to make sure we keep up on everything. They don't have the time to dedicate to, okay, we got to get the funding, because Bud's very clear on, you know, yeah, the turf fields have to be done the next couple of years at M C R A. He's been saying that since I took on Parks.
I remember when we took the tour, he was talking about it.
Yeah. And it always seems everything happens at once, and it seems, you know, if there's a windy weekend, he comes in to trees down and everything else. So, whatever project they hope to do to get ahead, they're just going out there and maintaining. And then Kelly, in the jail, I mean, the I T, you don't know how many times TJ gets called out for something on the jail.
Oh, yeah.
And he comes in on Monday, says, okay, I went to the jail this weekend, and this has just happened.
And the elevators.
Well, I think that the point, too, that you guys made, you know, previously about, you know, as our campus grows across the county, the strain that that puts on both I T and facilities in particular, and having to, you know, manage several places that are off-site, and, you know, they're not buildings that we've built, so they're learning those, they're they're learning those facilities and how to manage them and everything. So, it was just, I I would put this in all in the category of growing pains of a of a county that is doing really well and is able to, you know, take on some bigger things and expand services and be able to try to meet the needs of the community. But with that comes, you know, the cost associated with the actual people that have to go out and do that work every single day.
So, I'm hearing that there's support and approval for converting the current Parks and Trails D E M manager to just a D E M manager, adding a Parks and Trails manager and an I T manager, and the executive assistant was already approved. So, basically, approving two positions being added, Parks and Trails manager.
Was that, was that the executive one included in this number for how many employees we have?
For, no, this hasn't been added yet. It's not.
So, uh, Commissioners, I'm going to go along with it, but I want to stress something, okay? And just doing my simple numbers, and you are correct. We do need to have the seventeen to see, because we did a, our department took the largest cut of all of them when we did it. We, we carried a lot of it on our backs, and he's correct. So, that's, with that being said, can't be ignored. But looking at what I have right here, I'm looking at an increase that we've had over this period of time with these additional ones of fifteen, which is larger than many of the departments that are talking to us and are asking. The only reason why I bring that up now is they're going to be bringing stuff to us. Please, we need to keep that in mind. I I'm already stressed on the money anyway, because I know we're, unless something good happens that we haven't figured out yet, uh, we're going to be stressing. But I'm just asking to keep that in mind, even if we disagree a little bit, we need to have a fairness to it, because they understand their departments better than us. At least, I hope they do. Uh, just keep that in mind. I'm going to be supportive of this, but fifteen, that's a lot.
Which departments are you counting to get to fifteen?
I am counting, uh, emergency management, uh, facilities grounds, human resources, support services, Parks and Trails, and information technology.
I got to twelve.
Uh, plus, I think, plus these three. I got to twelve, too.
So, that'll be a D DoC on the first one, so that's neutral.
No, she said it's not included into this.
Right, but I am. So, that would be a neutral.
Right.
So, fourteen, which is still, I mean.
Yeah.
And I also, I mean, I don't think any of us are forgetting our our responsibilities as far as making sure that we keep the costs under control. But we also have to make sure that we're providing the services that people are paying for through their taxes. So, to me, it's important to to keep, we have to take a look at all of this and remember what our responsibilities are. So, I don't disagree with you.
And these departments, too, are internal support a lot. So, these other departments have grown, and they need support, too. So, that's a part of it.
Well, and I think, too, there's also, there's, I think that's a really important point to make. I mean, how, how much time does um, McKenzie and, um, you know, Kami and Danielle and Kayla and you and you and you? How much time, you know, we should start maybe tracking time that we spend, you know, helping auditor, the auditor's office or the auditor or the clerk or other departments. Um, you know, how much time does I T spend just on our stuff versus going and and handling things at the jail? Um, you know, and and I think with some of the direction that the I T steering committee's going, you know, with, um, you know, relying, well, the sheriff's office relying more on I T now than they have in the past, that's a real thing, too. Um, and and so, these are things that are, you know, there's a reason why it's called central services, and it's central to the entire county, and it's not just central to us. And, you know, always keep an open mind going into to a budget. We'll see what the requests are when that preliminary budget, you know, comes to us. But these are also critical decisions that we have to make, um, for the whole of the county as well. It's not, these things aren't being made in a vacuum. Um, everybody, everybody relies. I mean, I, you know, when I'm in my office and the doors are open and I hear the phone calls that our our team out in the, uh, you know, by our offices, and when I hear the phone calls that they're fielding on behalf of, you know, our office, that other departments are needing things, and the way that they have to kind of clean up things every now and then for those offices when they're putting together our agendas, and, I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, they really are incredible team players that, um, you know, they don't look at the the division of the departments when they're helping out. They just see the county logo, and they do the best they can for everybody across the board. So, have to appreciate everything that they do, and and this will hopefully support all of that. And I'm, I'm, I really like what you guys put together here, um, for us to consider today. So, great work.
Thank you. I I think that that for me, the direct correlations that I see, or if I see sixty-four and a half F T Es added, to me, that was, that that resonates with sixty-four more P Cs that have to be maintained by our I T department, right? Um, doesn't include the additional applications that come up and how we've had to diversify some of our applications to meet the specific business needs of an officer department. Um, the number of facilities, right? We're just moving into another facility by the hospital for our public health department. Our facility staff actually go up there and and paint that and remodel it and do that work, um, to make it usable for those folks. Uh, the additional North Mason facility that we added and and a couple of other ones here locally. So, so, yeah, they, you look at those, the corner stuff, absolutely. You look at the, you look at the the work that they do. Um, and you haven't seen that direct correlation, I don't believe. I might be wrong, because I haven't been here since two thousand seventeen. But, um, I don't see that direct correlation in increased staff associated with these increased responsibilities. So. I think that they've done a great job. They'll continue to do an amazing job, having some support there to provide the hole that Diane's going to create when she leaves, um, is essential. And having it for each individual department is necessary.
It is.
You set us up for the future, right?
We're not going to get any smaller.
No, we're only going to get bigger. Hundred percent agree with you.
I mean, if you look at the population growth throughout the state, the state is growing quickly, and so are we.
So, just so anybody who's listening or anything notices, I did not include things like community services and, uh, health services and, uh, uh, community development, because usually those are, those are more self-sustaining. And although that's under our department, it is still other monies that are coming in to do it.
Absolutely.
We've always been really good. I think we have. If a department shows us they bring in the revenue, we find a way to usually try to let them use it.
Absolutely. Public health is a great example of that, Commissioner. You get a grant where you'll get money through the, um, I'll just do a blank on it.
Foundational public.
Foundational public health model through the state, right? And and so, they actually have monies that actually pay for those positions. So, that is is commonly a question that you guys ask, is how are we going to pay for this? And and usually, it is external funds or fee-based.
Yeah. Another example, I mean, it it doesn't really show up on here because it's it's a contract, but um, if you look at our co-responder program, four hundred thousand dollars in a partnership to the sheriff's office to provide support for the for the whole community, but for deputies so that they don't have to, you know, they're not being relied on so much to take care of people who are in crisis, and that we have. You know, so I think it's just, there's also some things that are hidden in here that are coming out of different fund sources or or whatever that, um, you know, that we've been able to put together. And and I think that's, that goes along with having an open mind when, you know, when that preliminary budget comes to us and we start to get into our workshops, is, okay, how how have we put these things together in the past? How have we leveraged, um, other fund sources and partnerships to be able to provide? Um, you know, in the auditor's office, when you look at, um, you know, some of the funding from the Secretary of State's office for election security, you know, I I think we've always had an open mind. If it's a good, if it's a good thing for the county, if it's a good thing for the citizens, then, um, you know, we've typically been able to make it happen over the past several years. And so, I don't anticipate any of that changing. It's not an either-or scenario where we either help, you know, the central services of the county provide the level of service to to all the departments that they need or do something else. We can do both and. We can just, we just need to prioritize, and we need to understand what resources are available to us and and just have that prioritization conversation when we get into the budget.
And you guys have done it in a very fiscally responsible manner, um, as you can tell by the the health of the county's current expense fund.
And not taking the one percent, which is
Right, that's huge.
Creates its own.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, there are pros and cons to that. And someday, probably have to take the one percent again.
Someday we might.
You can't say no, because you don't know. Tomorrow holds. Look at the, what just happened with the stock market this week.
I know.
Shift happening right now, but this is what we saved for. Uh, I know from, in my mind, it was always to look at a a minimum of three years, because everything I see historically, three years is the low before it starts to pay for itself again. But you try to settle for five, because it may not be historical. Uh, the one year where we had planned, always planned in our budget before we shifted everything, that we would have an ending fund balance that would come back, uh, through unexpected budget authority. And then we kept cutting the budget, cutting the budget until there was no unexpected budget authority. And that's when we had a thirteenth month to make it. And we went, oh, shit, you know, because literally, it just, it never happened before. I'm watching all the way back. I never saw it, so I never saw it coming. I don't say anything here. We're prepared right now, I think, for five years, because we, if something happens, we never saw it coming. At least, that's the hope.
Lots of pieces go into that, right? Every contact we negotiate, every change that's made, um, those all impact that, and 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 oftentimes, little pieces add up into a mouthful. Um, and so, we always are managing that, monitoring that, making sure that you guys are aware of that. Um, and it's sometimes hard to remember all those details when you think about the broad scope of work that we do here at the county. But, uh, but you guys have done a good job with that, and I, and I think that the departments and offices have also respected that and only asked for what they feel like they need.
You know, it's funny, we never, nobody ever takes into account all the things that that come up and what happened. And I was in a discussion with somebody who wants, uh, And I was in a discussion with somebody who wants, who thinks the answer to all the issues we have in the community is just creating more low income to free housing. And then I tried to express to them that if you want to house fifty, you're looking at a minimum of twenty million when you're talking prevailing wage. When you're looking at twenty million over ten thousand people, only seven thousand, which actually are going to be paying the tax, you're looking at about three thousand dollars per person for that year. And as soon as you fill up that with the free people, the other ones are going to be coming in right behind them. So you have to do it forever and people can't afford to spend three thousand dollars a year per person. It seems like it's an easy answer, but it's not. Always difficult. Everything we touch, that's a long tail.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will put together the, we already created those position description drafts for y'all to look at. So what I'll do is I'll take those, bring them forward to brief with cost estimates from range one to ten and then get approval to move forward. And then also a position conversion from our current Parks and Trails DEM manager to just a DEM manager and split that out. Does that work? Maybe it's cookie. Okay. I don't have anything else for y'all then.
I'll entertain motion.
We adjourned.
Second.
No objection?
Thank you.
We adjourned.
As far as adding two thousand seventeen to these numbers, just have Mary brief it then at one of our next briefings.
Or just get it to us. I'd just like to see it.
The same way we received this is fine, you know, from Jen.
Great.
Because I'm curious too.